There we go.
And we are live.
Excellent. Thanks, Caitlin. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and welcome to the new report zoning board of appeals meeting for October twenty six, twenty twenty one via Zoom. My name's Mark Moore. I'm the vice chair calling the meeting to order as our chairman, Rob Chanty can't be here tonight. As always, we have our city planning director, Andy Port and a city planner, Caitlin Sullivan, handling the presentations and audience participation. And before we start, we should always recognize our note taker Gretchen Joy for her dedicated efforts. I will start with the roll call introduction of the board to verify that we have proper quorum. As I mentioned earlier, I am Mark Moore, vice chair, obviously in attendance with Rob Chanty absent. As I introduce each member now, I ask that you please respond with here or present. Secretary Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Excellent. A member Ken Swanton.
Here.
Amber Walt Shagnon.
Here.
Associate Member Gregory Bennet.
Here.
Excellent. Finding five members present, we have a quorum and can proceed with the meeting with all members when not recused will be voting. Three items of note tonight. First, sixty five curves on the road will be subject to a minimum board as the chair is absent and I will be recused. Secondly, twenty two twenty four Olive Street has requested a continuance until our eleven nine meeting. When public hearings begin, I'll share the continuance issue. Before handing the gavel to Secretary Stephen Delisle for sixty five cars on Mill Road, with my recusal and the chair's absence, sixty five will require a unanimous vote of all four voting members for approval. Lastly, a weather comment. Haven't heard enough about weather lately. Given the potential for a power outage in our area as real of the nor'easter, in the event that the power fails and the meeting is interrupted, to preserve the continuity of the meeting and the notice, we will consider the meeting closed and in fairness to all, any of tonight's unfinished business will be readvertised and posted to the city's website calendar with a new date that all can find. Of course, we'll work with the applicants accordingly on the reschedule. For those new to the zoning board of appeals meetings and or new to the Zoom format, we find it helpful to describe how the meeting will flow with a roll call completed will soon move to public hearings. I'll start by reading a description of the public notice to identify the application to be presented. I'll then ask for the applicant to present the details and salient points of their application and proposed changes. Often, it's the applicant's legal counsel or the applicant's architect that will present and describe the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we will then proceed to one of the reasons these meetings are called public hearings. The board will hear public comment, although still, although still virtual, public comment portion of the hearing entails asking any resident attendee wishing to comment to come forward and be heard. I will ask anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to be heard to raise their hand electronically utilizing the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Andy Port, Caitlin, or I will announce those that are recognized to speak. Please remember to unmute yourself before you start is occasionally forget that and it's an awkward silence. As always, before starting to comment, we ask that you clearly provide your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments succinct and to the point so others who wish to comment can do so efficiently. While commenting, feel free to state questions you may have for the record, but please allow the board to fulfill their role in eliciting additional detail in questions from the board portion of the hearing. Public comments are not intended to be a Q and A between attendees and the applicants. Thank you very much for your understanding. We will proceed with public comment until all raised hands are exhausted and all those who wish to be heard are heard. Once public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearing is closed and we move on to questions from the board. The board, often inspired by public comment and questions, will then ask the applicant or applicant's reps for any additional detail needed in their decision making process. When the board has exhausted their questioning, I will close that portion of the hearing and move to deliberations. Deliberations in the public forum is another cornerstone to this format. Everything the board discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public, so that all in attendance get to hear the thoughts and discussions of each member and of the board as a whole, as it moves towards its collective decision. During that process, it sometimes becomes evident that the board feels it needs more information for that the board is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. The board may then move to continue the application until it contain until it can obtain the desired information from the applicant. And give the opportunity to request a continuance. If, for some reason, the board seems to be leaning negatively, the board likes to give an applicant the opportunity to continue themselves so that they don't face the added cost of going to a formal vote if it's turned down, deal with the timing issues and the cost to reapply. When the deliberations are closed and the board proceeds to a formal vote, I will encourage a motion from the board and when seconded, we'll call for a vote. Because we use a form of Roberts Rules of Order, you will hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative or to approve, even if a board member making the motion plans to deny with a minimum number of four votes in the affirmative or motion or application is approved. I will then close the application and move on to the next hearing on the agenda, applying all the same rules. When all applications on the agenda are heard and addressed, I'll close the public hearings portion, the board will engage in a business meeting to approve the minutes from our last meeting and address any other items appropriate for that form. Okay, I've called the role. We have a quorum and we have the weather warning out of the way. Let's get started with the public meeting. First item that we'll address is the item of twenty two twenty four Olive Street. It's a application twenty one, twenty twenty one dash forty four special permit on nonconformities. And there's been a request made by the applicant to continue this to our eleven nine meeting. Does the applicant wish to be heard on this? Or should the board just proceed?
The board can proceed. I just like to inform the board, we're still in front of the Historic Commission, and that's the purpose of the continuance. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you very much. All right. So we have a request to continue to the eleven nine meeting for the twenty dash twenty four Olive Street application for special permit. Do we have any discussion or emotion from the board?
Vice Chair, this is Bud Shagnon. I'll make a motion to continue twenty two to twenty four Olive Street, document number twenty twenty one dash forty four to the November ninth meeting.
A second at Ken Swanton.
All right. We have a motion made and seconded made by Ms. Chagin, second by Mr. Swan. So we now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's all in the affirmative. So this matters continued to our eleven nine meeting. So now we will go back to the beginning of the agenda and we'll address sixty five curves on the road, an application that I'll be recusing myself from, but it is application twenty twenty one dash zero six for dimensional variance to construct a new two-story garage and master bedroom, creating a new side yard nonconformity. I am now stepping aside, recuse myself and Secretary Stephen Delisle will take it from here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. With that, we will reopen the public hearing for sixty five Curzon Mill Road, application twenty twenty one dash zero six. And I think we have the applicant here tonight, Mr. Brendan Johnson, if you want to take it away.
Yeah, I'm here with my wife Christina Creel Johnson as well.
So yesterday, my husband sent a memorandum. I'm just curious, have you guys had the opportunity to review it? And did you receive it? So there it is.
Yeah, I think that we can confirm that it has been received by the board. And it was distributed to the members of the board by the planning office. And I would imagine that everybody took a look at it, but I don't think that I can say that with one hundred percent certainty, but you can continue with your presentation.
So my question is, is if you have the opportunity to review it, or if you did not, because if you did not have the opportunity to review it, would you like to take a minute to review it? Or would you like me to walk you through the memorandum?
I think we can, we should, for the purposes of the meeting, we can assume that everyone has, has reviewed the memorandum, but I think that it would be prudent for the record for you to take us through the memorandum and your argument set forth in the memorandum.
Okay, so our house is built in an unusual angle from the front and rear lot lines and is setback over forty feet from the yard line. Because of the structure position and adding a larger garage and additional living space above presents its challenges. We've explored countless alternatives to avoid seeking this variance relief, but complying additions would result in either aesthetically unappealing home, a substantially less functionality, and maybe it an additional financial hardship. Let's see. So there's, I mean, do you want me to go over the, the thing, the, what we've looked at? As
I think you, you should, excuse me, I'm sorry to speak over you. Please forgive me for that. But I think you should, you should present the whatever material you want the board to hear and present your full argument to the board.
Right. Well, there's five things that we could have done in order to not request this variance. One of them is that we could tear down our entire garage as opposed to just adding on to it, as well as the living space above it. And we would make our garage more forward facing as opposed to the way that it is now, which is angled. If we did it more forward facing, we would have to move our driveway more over to the right than what it is now. And not only would we have to tear down our master bedroom, which is our living space above it and our garage, we would possibly even have to redo part of our kitchen, which is what is attached to the garage, which would, you know, which would be a much more significant cost than just the addition, as well as, I don't necessarily know if it would be that aesthetically appealing, because our house would still be angled, but now our garage would be forward facing. Another thing that we have looked at is indenting the garage just only on one side by four feet, which does not keep up with the aesthetic design of the rest of the house, and it also limits walking space around the vehicle as well as it limits room from having the vehicle like go in and out of the garage. Another thing that we had looked at was that we is that we can attempt to make the addition appear more aesthetically adequate by having the indent of four feet on both sides of the garage. In doing so, it would be extremely tight for both cars when both cars are in the garage to be able to walk around as well as be able to getting the vehicles in and getting the vehicles out. Not only that, the living space above the entire outdoor space or the entire outdoor wall, I should say, is all dormers. So when we are asking for this addition, we would be taking away the dormers completely. If we indent on both sides by four feet, we're leaving eight linear feet, so four feet, like four linear feet on both sides of basically dead space, as well as the cost for this indent would still be the same exact cost as if we were to do the entire addition that we're requesting for. Another thing that we looked at was possibly moving the garage completely over to the right side. However, if you look at, is there something else that they can look at?
Yeah. If you pull up the other PDF. You can see a picture of the front of the house.
Yeah. So if you look at the PDF, if you look, the right side of our house is also already at that setback of our, you know, so there's just no way that we could add an entire garage on top of that. And the last option would be to basically to make this all work would be to tear down our house and to start over from new, which is, you know, way more of a financial burden. So all of these options either provide a much greater financial hardship, a less functionality space, or a substantially less aesthetic of architectural design and hardship. This is why we are requesting the relief from the twenty foot side yard setback to permit our, our garage to approach on the sixteen feet, six inches from the side lot. The reason that we've requested is everything that we just stated above. Per the rules and regulations of the ZBA, I don't really want to state the entire law. I'm, I'm, I believe that you guys are familiar with it, but I'll just give you the highlighted version that's in the memorandum, which is with respect to the particular land or structures, a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw, where such permit granting authority specifically finds that owning to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petition or appellant, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. I hope that you find that owning to circumstances relating to the shape of our land and the existing structure, which is the angle of our home that's on the lot at this present time, and especially affecting such land and structure by not affecting generally our zoning district, the sighting is unique to the, to the lot and the structure. That literal enforcement of the twenty foot yard setback would involve substantial heart to, to us, financial or otherwise, which means like we would not be able to require our vehicles to fit into our yard, I mean, sorry, into our garage. We would not be able to maximize the aesthetic of structure for ourselves and the upstairs space, as well as it would be like an eyesore, and it just would not be aesthetically pleasing for us and our neighbors. We cannot provide the aesthetically pleasing, pleasing and architecturally consistent addition without this modest relief, which is a desirable relief and can be granted without the substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent of the purpose of the bylaw. In fact, several other properties in our neighborhood alone have side yard set setback nonconformities. The setback limitations are designed to protect the development with a certain minimum distance. Here, the trade off for the reasonable zoning relief is both pleased by us, the particular petitioners, as well as our abutters. The neighborhood would be well served by the approval of this position and the uniquely cited of, of our home, and the limitations of the lot provided, we've, we have provided ample of support of the variance. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the board grant the request of the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point in the meeting, I would ask for anyone in support or opposition to the application to raise their hand and be called upon to speak.
I'm not seeing one at this time, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin. I appreciate that. With that, we can close the the public hearing and move on to deliberation of the members. And we will begin with, with Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I have a question. If you could put up the page that was marked alternative, showing a little bit of a, yeah, that one. So I'm just trying to understand this page. So you're saying if you were to do this, you would avoid needing a variance. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I, the numbers are so small here. I just want to make sure I understand. So the, the length of this garage, I see a Ford, four door, six foot bed. And how long is the garage right there? I can't really read the numbers.
I believe it's twenty nine feet in this scenario.
Thank you. Um, so could you just, I'm sorry, but you may, I've already addressed this. I think you did on the way by, but could you just repeat that the issue with this particular approach, which would avoid a variance is what?
The width of the garage gets shrunk pretty significantly.
And the width, once again, I really, I can't see the numbers here, but what is the width of the front of the garage there where the two doors are, the, the total width?
Twenty one feet.
Twenty one feet. Okay, I just want to understand that because I couldn't quite make out the numbers. Um, the, the, my next question has to do with a variance. You know, we do quite a few special permits, but variances are kind of a higher bar for us, and it requires the lot either being an odd shape or being an unusual topology, like a very steep slope, or soil conditions, like a lot of wetlands and things. But, you know, in going by your house there, it seems like the lot is a square lot, or pretty close to rect, rectangular. The, it seems like it's pretty flat, too. It's not like there's a big hill there. And it also seems like there's not a lot of, like a little swampland or something. I mean, it seems like it's, it's good land. Just wants, is that correct?
It is. Like the hardship is the position of the home. If our home wasn't at the angle that it was, we wouldn't need this variance. It's because the hardship is the angle of the home, and the hardship is also the financial burden of what it would be to make this like aesthetically pleasing without the variance.
Yeah, I know. I get that. I get why that's a hardship for you to have to kind of start over with your garage. But we who are trying to apply the, the city's laws here have to look not so much at the building, but at the lot itself, whether it's, you know, an odd shape, or an odd topology, or, you know, has swamps and things. So I just wanted to verify that. I don't really have any other questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Let's move on to Mr. Shannon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Delisle. I guess going back to Mr. Swanton's line of questioning, the alternative drawing that was up, it looks like the face of the garage is twenty one feet. Is the face of the garage that you're requesting twenty four feet? Is there, or twenty four and a half? Is there a three or three and a half foot difference between the alternative and what you're requesting?
I have my, that's on the line, Steve. I believe you can answer exactly what the numbers are because I don't have the drawing in front of me.
And the reason I'm assuming that is I believe the, the base case, you're three and a half feet into the setback. And in the alternate case, you're zero, you're right at the lot line, I assume, of a twenty foot setback.
So the
It's actually four feet of inset in that alternate layout.
Okay, so is, so is the garage in the proposed request, is it twenty five feet wide then? Because the alternate is twenty one?
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Okay. I've got no other questions, Mr. Delisle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And I should apologize. I misspoke earlier when I introduced this section. I think I said that this was the deliberation section and I misspoke, which is the questions from the board. I apologize for that. And with that, we can, we can move on to Mr. Bennet for questions from the board.
Thank you for your presentation. I understand your dilemma, but I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I just have one question in the, Andy, if you could go to slide number five. Thank you. In the proposed drawing, is the, the back wall of the garage, the, the mudroom back wall? Or is it that little the, the, the narrower wall, which is sort of, I guess, the wall separating the, the mudroom from the area where the, the car is stored? Where, where is the back wall of the actual garage that's proposed to be added to the, to the existing, or I guess the garage exists currently, it's going to be extended. So is, is the back wall of the garage, the back wall of the mudroom?
Yes. The back wall is to where the back of the staircase is on the left side and the back wall of the mudroom.
And so the mudrooms like five and a half feet or five foot eight or something like that?
Sound, yeah, that sounds about right.
Is that the dimension set forth on the, on the proposal? Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it for questions from me. And with that, we can, we can now go to, we can close the question section and go to deliberation by the members of the board, and we can start with Mr. Swanton.
Um, yeah, my issue with this, as it was many months ago, when this first came up, is that there's really by my understanding, not a reason that the lot creates a reason for a hardship. The fact that the house was built at whatever angle it was, and the garage was built at whatever angle is, is whatever it is, but we have to look at the lot. And the lot isn't a rectangle, it's flat, and it's high and dry. So I, I, I have a hard time granting a variance here where we turn down variances in other parts of the city, particularly with a garage that is very large garage compared to other ones we've looked at on other parts of the city, and where the alternative here is to avoid that little corner there and go to the alternative. But I mean, we can't even really consider that. I think we need to be thinking about a lot shape, soil conditions, and topography. And I just don't see why this lot stands out as a reason that it has an issue with those things. So I'm reluctant to to support a variance for this garage. And that's kind of where I am. But I'd like to hear where my colleagues are on this thing. Maybe I've missed overlooked something.
Right. Am I allowed to speak?
This is Mr. Delisle. I don't think that we can take comment right now. But let's go through the deliberation of the members of the board, and then we can we can, we can consider, you know, further, further discussion. But I'd like to move along to, to Mr. Shannon now.
And thank you, Mr. Delisle. I guess just for discussion, since we're deliberating, when we look at the section ten under variances, which was in the, it was in the memorandum, there's, there's a clause in there, I guess, maybe as a group, we ought to just consider. I don't think we've considered it in the past, but maybe it's appropriate here. It says, you know, circumstances relating to soil conditions, comma, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affect it, not affecting generally the zoning district. So it seems as though they call into play structure, which I assume the garage in the house is. And it is kind of a queer angle that it's at, causing this hardship for this family. Is that, is that something we should be looking at? I mean, is, is one of the hardships, the fact that this building was built at this strange angle? So that adding to it at all, you know, requires a variance? I'm, I'm just bringing it up for the team. For me, that's the only, the only line in the entire variance permit that would, that would come into play here, where if we took that into account, a variance might be appropriate here. That's all I had, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shannon. Let's move along to Mr. Bennet, please.
I I think I agree with Mr. Shagnon's reading of the zoning ordinance. I think it is appropriate to consider the structure itself. However, as we know, the discretion that we have here in granting a variance is quite circumscribed. And I take the point that we can look at the structure itself. However, I have two major hurdles that I found myself having a hard time clearing. And first, I have a hard time reaching a conclusion that the current situation and structure involves a quote substantial hardship to this applicant. And I understand what the hardship is. I, I know that the terms of I, I know that the term substantial hardship has some subjectivity to it. However, in my view, I think we are talking about more than adding to an existing two-car garage, which I believe can house, certainly can house cars. And that was structured for that very purpose. Secondly, we must find that the current situation here deprives the application applicant of reasonable use of the structure. And that certainly is not the case here. The Johnsons can certainly use this property reasonably, and in fact, very comfortably. So I, I'm having a difficult time reaching the rigorous conclusions that we must reach to grant a variance as contrasted to a special permit for nonconformities, for example. So that's kind of my observations on this. And it, this, I'm not saying anything about the character and the quality of the application itself. But I find ourselves quite circumscribed here in making these very rigorous findings here that we must do in connection with the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. So I, I would be inclined to agree with Mr. Swanton and Mr. Bennet here that this is a, a tall finding that we have to, we have to make in order to overcome the hurdle that the law sets forth for, for the granting of a variance. And my, my deliberation on this, or my, my thoughts on this are that we're not, we're not quite there with respect to the, the facts that we need to, to consider to grant this variance. So I think that I would have a hard time at this time, now, as previously when we, when we discussed this, supporting this variance. So with that, we can end the deliberation section. And I see that Mr. Tedesco has his hand up. Is that a question? Oh, he no longer has his hand up. Okay. So I guess at this point in time, hearing the, hearing the, the members of the board deliberate on this application, would the applicant be inclined to to withdraw the application? Or would the applicant prefer the board go to a vote?
I'm just wondering if anyone else in the neighborhood is on this call right now?
Mr. Johnson, I think we, we went through that portion during the, the public comment portion, and there was nobody who spoke either, either for or against at that point in time. So I think we've closed the public hearing on this. And now that the question becomes, should we go to a vote? Or do you want to?
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Yep, can you give me one second?
Yeah, let, let me just, just reiterate something that Mr. Moore said earlier, that because we have a minimum board here for you this evening, it would require four votes in the affirmative, meaning all four members of the board would have to vote in favor of the variance for you to be successful. And if it went to a vote and the vote was not successful, there would be a two-year prohibition on presenting an application that is not, I think, substantially different from the, the current application.
And how many board members are there that are not going to be, that are not here tonight that could potentially vote?
Well, there's only, there would be one additional board member, so you would have five board members on another night. But we've heard from the board members during this deliberative process, and it appears that there are three which do not seem inclined to vote in favor of the application. So under, under any count, you need four, whether it's four of five or four of four.
We, we would like a continuance.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from the board for a continuance of this matter?
Mr. Delisle, I will move that we grant a contingent, continuance for application 2021-06, but circumscribe that continuance with the admonition and directive and order from the zoning board that, that this continuance is the last continuance for this application.
I'll second that, Ken Swanton.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Swanton. So I'll go to, to the roll. Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And I, Stephen Delisle, vote yes. That's four in favor of a continuance of application 2021-06 for 65 Curzon Mill Road.
Chair Delisle, this is Caitlin, just thinking we need a, a date and time certain. And I suggest the 11/23 meeting, the 11/9 meeting is very full.
Okay, Caitlin, thank you. So we will, should we revote that then? With
Yes, please.
11/23? Did you say yes, please?
Thank you. Yes.
Does that date work for the applicant?
Mr. Johnson, is the November 23rd good for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we will now, we'll revoke this. Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's four in the affirmative. And with that, 65 Curzon Mill Road is completed, and we will bring back Mr. Moore and hand him the virtual gavel.
Broke my own rule and didn't unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Next on the agenda is our application for 30 Winter Street, 2021-49 Special Permit for Nonconformities, remove an existing rear shed roofline, extend upward the second floor walls and roof to create greater headroom. This is continued from our September 28th meeting. And I believe the applicant, Eric Premack, will be presenting, and might we hear from the applicant?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So had brought this forward to ZBA back in September, and we tabled it until I could get a decision from Historical, which I did last week at their, at their meeting after a few, a few changes to the plan. Most specifically was the reduction of the rear section to leave the rear gable exposed. That was one of the biggest issues that Historical had. If you guys want to, I'm not sure if you remember this project, if you want to review it again. We have the front section, which is going to remain intact and, and the same view, and all the, all the existing window openings replaced with light windows, simulated divided light windows that are going to be from Harvey with the black, black exterior. And if you go down the presentation and look at the, there's, okay, so there's the rear section. So the rear section, as you said, we lowered that so that you could, so that the full gable on the left side would stay exposed. And what we're going to do is tear off that back section and rebuild it so that we don't have any issues with structural questions as well, which Historical had some, some questions about. If, if you go back, you see it has a, a sloped roof now. And so we're going to tear that back section off, rebuild it, so that it has a somewhat flat roof, not, not totally flat. It's going to be a little pitched from the right side of that gable until a flat, a, a flat-like section on that back end. Again, going to be replacing all the windows in the house with the same, six over six, nine over six, twelve over twelve, twelve over eight, keeping all the existing doors, keeping all the existing trim, replacing and repairing where necessary. The same exact footprint of the house, not, you know, this is basically an extension of existing nonconformities. Because on both sides of the house, there's only about three feet between neighbors. And that's, that's pretty much it. If you, if there's any questions as far as what we're doing of the structure, please feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Premark. With the presentation done, we will now look for a public comment. I don't know if anyone's participating that wishes to comment on this application, but at this point, it's a good time to electronically raise your hand and be heard.
All right, we have Mr. Thomas Colterjohn.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Tom Colterjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. I would like to simply draw attention to two brief items this evening. This wonderful historic building is certainly in need of restoration. And I am glad it will finally be getting some attention. Mr. Premack's memo dated 10/19/21. He states his intentions to basically restore this building. In number seven specifically, the existing side doors will remain, all existing clavit will be kept repaired or replaced with badly deteriorated. All wood trim, window and door surrounds, corner boards, et cetera, shall be restored, repaired, or replaced in kind to match existing design and materials. I only point this out because we have seen in the past developers who go way beyond this. I just want to highlight that the intention here is restoration, not replacement. The second item is a concern, or perhaps it's simply a question on the windows. Windows went back and forth many times during the Historic Commission hearings. My understanding is that the intention is vinyl windows. I can't tell from the spec sheet submitted. If it is vinyl, I think it's a shame, and that the building deserves better windows. Our landfills are overflowing with poor-quality windows. My wife and I have seen a neighboring house whose windows have been changed three times so far while we have lived here. They're about to get a fourth set of windows, because most of them were vinyl and poor quality. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colterjohn. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Not seeing, seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. All right, so with no further hands raised, public comment portion, the meeting is closed. And we'll move to questions from the board, and we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Premack, how are you? Good, good evening.
Good evening.
Just to pick up on Mr. Colterjohn's comments, and you know, what went, what happened at the Historical committee with respect to the windows, if you could just sort of let us know what the, what the verdict is on the windows.
Well, we did go back and forth a few times on the windows. They did want me to use wood windows. I had a, a well-known woman over in Amesbury, the Window Woman. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with her. She came and assessed the windows, and it turned out that none of the windows in the house were original. But they had been replaced, probably in the, in sometimes, she, her best guess was like mid-'90s. And unfortunately, they were replaced by good windows, but nobody, nobody ever took care of them. And everything was pretty much rotted. So she had given me a quote as far as what to do, what it would cost to replace, again, all of these fine window openings with wood windows. And then, and then storms, you would have to add storms. And the price was not only extremely prohibitive, but the fact is, I, I, I already, and, and I know it has nothing to do with what you guys seek, but I already have a, a buyer for this house, who is putting me in charge of restoring this house. And she wants vinyl windows. I'm not replacing them with cheap windows by any stretch. They're not going to be as much as wood, but for ease of use and cleaning, et cetera. As far as energy efficiency goes, she prefers vinyl. The board, we went back and forth a little bit, and I presented the board with the spec sheet of what I was going to use, and they agreed. It was, it was part of the, part of the agreement with Historical last time that they accepted the windows that I was going to use. They just wanted me to give in another spec as to the exact window I would use. And I, I passed that in yesterday, which is a Harvey window, Harvey vinyl. It's a, it's black clad on the outside and white on the inside.
And, and that's the spec that, that we received that Andy has on the, on the screen now?
Correct. So obviously, that's just, that's just a sample of one of them, but those will be the windows that we used.
Okay, and one thing that we talked about when we had the prior meeting was whether the, are they the mullions, the, the, the parts that make up the window grate?
Yeah, so we've got the 3D, so we got the three, so we got the, the grates on the exterior, on the outside, as well as the space, as well as the space of bars on the inside.
Got it. Okay, okay. And then with regard to the, the back gable, I believe, I remember that as being one of the issues that, that we talked about. So that now has been resolved in the, in the, to the satisfaction of Historical as well.
Correct.
That's it for questions for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I, Mr. Delisle asked several of mine, but I have one more, which is around the the memo that we got, I think also Mr. Colterjohn referenced. If you could, Andy, put the, or Caitlin, put the little note up there. I guess on point four, if we zoom in on point four, it says that, the last line there in point four, the door opening should remain the same, and all trim, window and door surrounds, corner boards, is to be repaired, replaced in kind to match the existing. We have run into situations in other projects recently where people have been quite liberal in interpreting this sentence, repaired or replaced in kind. Mr. Premack, could you comment upon what you have in mind there?
We have nothing but wood in mind. All the trim, all the trim that's, if anything's rotted, it's going to be removed and replaced with the same kind of trim in wood. We're not looking to do PVC. The only thing that's going to be exterior on this house that won't be wood will be the vinyl windows.
Okay, I noticed you mentioned in the plan that you're looking at red cedar for the clawboards.
Correct.
So like even, I didn't look closely at your window surrounds, but you'd be matching moldings and all that kind of stuff if you find some that are rotten and need to be replaced?
Correct, which is just about all of them. Which is just about all of them.
So you'd be building new wood, new wood moldings matching what's there from the seventeen hundreds. Okay, just checking. Um, the, uh, you know, we've had other projects in town where people have wanted to do things with upward extensions, but yours is on the back. Um, and you now do have the support of the Historic Commission. So I, I think I have no additional questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Uh, Mr. Chapman?
I've, I've got no additional questions, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Bennet?
No questions here.
Thank you very much, and I will echo that as well. I think all the questions that, uh, needed to be asked were asked. So with that, I will, um, close the questions from the board portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations. And go swing it around to Mr. Delisle. I remember, uh, excuse me, Mr. Delisle, before we, we discussed this, we should remember it's a per- a special permit for nonconformity, so our discussions should uh, revolve around the findings that we need to make, uh, in granting a special permit. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. In looking at the, uh, criteria for the special permit for nonconformities, um, clearly here there will be no addition of a new nonconformity. And with regard to the, um, the scope of the application, uh, I don't really believe that there'll be any, um, it will create a situation that is substantially more detrimental, uh, to the neighborhood than what, what currently exists. I think that, you know, having this fully vetted by the Historical, uh, Commission and, um, the, the back and forth between, uh, Mr. Premack and, and Historical, he yielded a better, a better plan here. And I think this is something that I can support.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Uh, Mr. Swan?
Uh, yeah, I think Mr. Delisle, uh, once again, hit many of my key points. I think I would like to add, you know, in a perfect world, I would like to s- it, it's unfortunate you moved away and moved to vinyl, but you do at least have grates on the outside and, um, the, the other thing I wanted to emphasize is that I, I have objected recently to projects where people wanted to do a, a major upward extension. But i- in other cases, they were on the main building right on a street and with the, with the media object, a butters objecting. In this case, this is on the back. Uh, it's not on the major building, it's on the L, uh, and I haven't heard anything from a, an immediate butter objecting. So I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chapman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, I agree with the comments made by, uh, Mr. Delisle and I can support the application. Thank you.
Excellent, and Mr. Bennet?
I will echo those remarks. This is a property that, uh, is in bad need of rehabilitation and restoration. I appreciate Mr. Premack, your, uh, undertaking that, uh, and I further, uh, am pleased with the way that you worked with the, uh, Historic Commission here to arrive at, uh, what they perceive as an acceptable project and what, uh, I do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and for all the reasons stated by my colleagues, um, they, they said it best. And for those reasons, uh, I certainly do, uh, I can find myself in support of this. Um, the renovation is gonna be a real plus for the, for the city. So, um, with that, I close deliberations and then we'll look for a, uh, a motion.
Uh, Greg Bennet, I will make a motion that the application for special permit for nonconformities for thirty Winter Street, uh, application number twenty twenty-one dash four nine, uh, be approved.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve made by Mr. Bennet, second by Mr. Delisle, when I go toward a vote. Uh, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
I am yes as well, all in, uh, in the affirmative. Application is approved.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, we now move on to our next, um, application this evening, and that's for sixty-four Liberty Street. Uh, twenty-one, I mean, twenty, twenty, twenty-one dash fifty-two, special permit for nonconformities. Remove an existing one-story addition on a non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new addition. The application is Eve Davis Lee, care of Lisa Mead, me, Tellman Costa. And at this point, this was continued from nine twenty-eight, and at this point, might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, uh, Mead Tellman Costa, thirty Green Street, uh, for the applicant Eve Lee, um, at sixty-four Liberty Street. And with me this evening, uh, in addition to, um, Eve is Julie McDonald of Olson Lewis Architects, who is the architect on the project. If you go to the next page, please. So, um, this property at the corner of Liberty and Federal Street, um, is a current single-family home. It's in the R two district. And we're proposing to renovate and add on to the single-family home by removing a, uh, shed roof addition and replace it with a new addition. Uh, as I noted, the properties in the R two zoning district, the structure was built between seventeen fifty and seventeen seventy-five and its list is contributory on the district data sheets. The applicant is removing less than twenty-five percent of the exterior walls and therefore the DCOD does not apply. However, there was a roofline change, that is, we're removing that shed roof addition. Um, and that required us to go to the Historic Commission, uh, where we received a approval of the addition which you have before you this evening. The property is non-conforming for area. There's one thousand eight hundred eighty-three square feet, where ten thousand square feet are required. It is point two feet over the rear property line and the rear property line in this instance, as I'll show you in a minute, is that property line opposite Liberty Street, because it's the longest. So it's two feet over the rear property line, uh, where twenty-five feet is required. The front setback is two feet over where twenty-five percent is, twenty-five feet is required. And the side setback, um, is zero or ten feet is required. That is, on the, uh, Federal Street side. Further lot coverage is non-conforming at fifty-three point two percent, where twenty-five percent is required. And the open space is at twelve point three, where a minimum of forty percent is required. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the proposal is to remove the existing one-story addition on the northerly end of the structure. And if you're standing at that, at the structure in front of Liberty Street, it's the, the addition that's on the right-hand side. Um, and replace it with both a single and two-story addition, the two-story being located to the rear of the property and not right on Liberty Street. Uh, the deck will also be revised and made slightly smaller, uh, given the modified addition. Um, the rear law, the rear setback, um, will be extended. Um, although it will be improved because we're actually taking off the encroachment and, uh, making it meet the rear or that come inside the property line, if you will. The new footprint will extend approximately four point one feet longer than the addition down Liberty Street. And the rear extension along the rear lot line will extend an additional eight point eight feet along the rear lot line from the current addition. Uh, on the north and south, where the current addition extends over the property line, as I in, in implied earlier, uh, that will be brought into the property. One aspect of it will be adjacent to the Liberty Street side will actually be stepping back five point five feet from Liberty Street to the, um, second story addition. So, um, as again, the primary front yard setback is extended, the rear yard setback is extended. Uh, lot coverage is increased slightly, uh, open space is also increased, that's to the better. But that's because we make that rear yard come on to the property, um, and so we gain some coverage in that regard. So the addition constitutes an upward extension as long and along the rear property line extension as well. Next slide, please. So the upper, uh, plan is the existing conditions. Uh, and the lower plan is the proposed conditions. So you can see, um, how the addition extends a little bit further, um, down the rear lot line and, um, down Liberty Street. Next slide, please. So here's the existing conditions, uh, the front elevation. Um, I'm gonna run through these and then I'm gonna turn it over to Eve to talk about the details of the addition. Um, and how we believe that the new addition actually is, um, is very much in keeping, as did the Historic Commission with the design criteria under, um, the Secretary of the Interior standards. But here's the front elevation along Liberty Street. Next slide, please. And, um, here's our proposed along Liberty Street. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Julie just to talk a little bit about, um, why she designed the proposed addition in this manner.
Hi, good evening. This is Julie McDonald from Olson Lewis Architects. Um, I hope you're all doing well. Thank you. And this, this shows, uh, a two-story addition, although, um, what we wanted to do was keep, in addition to pulling the, the new, the new back from the face of the house. We wanted to, um, really be careful to show, to keep, to keep the addition lower and, um, you know, not as important as the original larger part of the house. So what you see on the, at the addition is the, uh, one-story piece that's close to Liberty. And then also a one-story piece on the right that's set even further back. And the two-story piece is beyond, so it's, uh, we really feel that from the street, it, it, it's, it's kind of, um, it's got a nice scale, kind of approachable, low. Um, where you also see that we're going to be doing cedar shake roof to match the existing. The, um, the siding will also match and be continuous, you know, the same, the same exposure width. We are going to be simplifying the trim, uh, although it will be painted wood. We wanted to, um, again, show a difference between the original main part of the house and this. We thought it was appropriate to simplify a bit. And other than that, real, you know, simple details similar to what we have at the original house as far as where the roof, the eve details overhang on corner boards. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the existing west elevation, so you see the, the one-story shed with skylight, kind of a more contemporary piece, and you see the, uh, overhangs, how the, um, that part of the house projects to the right and left. Those are where we actually stick over the property line. Next slide, please. So here you'll see that, um, the proposed, that at the, the front and back, we're pulling the addition in both to, um, have the, all the new part be within the property line and also to, um, to not, um, conflict with those, the existing edges of the main house. Uh, so here again, you see on left side, you see the one-story piece that's at Liberty Street. And the two-story piece that's set, set back towards the rear of the property. And we also have the one-story, um, gable roof that's coming towards us. Uh, again, uh, wood windows, um, carrying through similar window sizes and light patterns. Painted wood door entry. Next slide, please. And this is the back elevation as it exists, you know, right at the property line. There's no windows. Um, next slide, please. And so we see the, the massing of the new, again, this would be, um, it is set back a bit from, from that south elevation of the house. I think that's the last slide of the... Oh, yes, and there's, there's no change to this elevation. The...
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, as Julie said, there's no change on this elevation on Federal Street. And if you could go to the next slide, um, please, Caitlin. And here are photographs of the existing condition, um, which are actually very well illustrated. Uh, I'll point out to the, on the, the bottom right photograph, you can see how close the house next door at, uh, twenty-six Federal Street is. Uh, that's Chris and Tom Tush. Uh, and they have, um, provided a letter of support or non-opposition, uh, to Eve's proposal. Um, as has, uh, the, um, a butter to the right on Liberty Street, which is at, um, sixty-four Liberty Street. I believe is that number, and they have also provided a letter of, uh, it's sixty Liberty Street, excuse me, a letter of non-opposition. Next slide, please. So, uh, the board needs to consider, as you know, uh, the criteria for special permit for nonconformities. Um, here, the first criteria is that no new nonconformities are created. And there are no, no new nonconformities created. There isn't upward extension and an extension along both of the front line and the rear line. Um, but it actually improves it in both instances, even though it doesn't meet the setback required. It does improve it and bring it inside the framing, um, as Julie explained, of the existing house and importantly, inside the property line. Uh, the next, um, criteria is that, uh, the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood uh, than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, here, um, the proposed addition adds a mere hundred twenty-eight square feet to the footprint of the home. Uh, further, the rear lines extended eight point eight feet, uh, but not at the same intensity as I noticed before. Uh, the extension of the, is entirely within the property lines. Uh, whereas the existing structure lies, lies outside the property line and conflicts with the current edges of the historic home. While it's true that there is an upward extension in the rear nonconformities, you can see from the elevations, there are no windows on that side of the home. And we have support from the butters, um, as well. Further, the applicant has discussed, um, the proposed addition with the other butters and they too, um, support it. Finally, the addition is in keeping with the historic nature of the home. Does not detract from it and is clearly subservient and apart from it. Um, it respects the design of the existing, uh, end of that home and front face of that home. Um, and certainly doesn't detract from it and is subservient to it. Also, while not directly in the board's purview, uh, you'll see the details of the addition are consistent with that historic structure, including the windows and siding. Which is why we actually returned to the Historic Commission. It wasn't that they had or took any issue with the, um, proposal itself. Uh, they wanted to see the details on the plan of the proposed materials, so namely the, the cedar, uh, shingles on the roof. Uh, the cedar siding and the exposure, and in particular, the windows. Uh, they wanted to see in more detail, it was originally proposed that the windows weren't as consistent with the existing on the structure and now they are. So as I remind the board that the term substantially means to a great or civic significant extent. And when used in the context of the ordinance, the board would have to make a finding that the proposed renovations and expansion upward were substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Here, based on the side of the size of the change to the addition as compared to the existing conditions, the proposed change cannot be found to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we respectfully suggest to the board. And we'd request that you approve the special permit for nonconformities for sixty-four Liberty Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead, and, and thank you, Ms. McDonald, presentation. Um, at this point, we will, um, close that part of the hearing and move on to, uh, public comment. Anyone that wishes to comment on this application, attending the meeting, please use the raised hand icon to be recognized and remember to unmute and clearly state your name and address.
I'm not seeing any hands at this time, Chair.
No hands at this time. Give it a second. Three, two, one. All right, no comments from the public. We will close that portion of the hearing. And move on to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, Attorney Mead, a couple of questions for you. Um, the, one of my questions was answered actually by the, uh, the second dot under number two, what was the, uh, the total increase of the square footage through the proposed addition, which is one hundred twenty-eight, uh, square feet? So that's, that's good, that's answered. Do you know what the, the age of the structure, the part of the structure that's gonna be removed is? How? Do you know what the, the age of the structure, the part of the structure that's gonna be removed is, how is that? That's not contemporaneous with the, the age of the historical portion of the, of the building, is it?
Mr. Delisle, first, you give me an opportunity, I wanna say it's really great to see all of your faces. I really appreciate the new format, so it's a little more personal. So Mr. Delisle, there's a really great question. One of the reasons we had to go to Historic Commission is because as you face the end of the structure on Liberty Street, that shed roofed addition was on there, we couldn't date it. But then there was an addition, so that part of that shed roof addition was not original to the structure but was added. But it's unclear how much later, but it's old. Then behind it, more recently, in the last 40 years, let's say, there was an addition put on to that. Where the skylights and the, and the sliders and everything are. So it was of two ages. But the side one was a little bit older.
Okay, okay, interesting. Okay, and so in the proposed, the proposed addition, the upward extension is actually not on the Liberty Street frontage, but it's on the, the, the back of the property, the, the, the side running parallel to Liberty Street.
That's correct, if you could go to the next page please Caitlin. So as you can see, on this, this is the exact same view. And Julie and Eve designed this purposefully so that it was not on the Liberty Street side, and there was actually a step back. So we first had a step back to that first floor addition, which was not, that corner board was not exposed before. And so now it will be exposed. And then about five and a half feet in, that second floor gets added on, so it is definitely not right on Liberty Street.
And I, I noticed that with regard to, to open space and lot coverage, one is going up and one is going down. Or one is becoming more intensified and one is becoming less intensified. Could you sort of walk us through that?
So sure, so the, the lot coverage is increasing, because if you go to the site plant, now Caitlin please. And I don't know if you can blow it up a little bit, but on, on the bottom. So lot coverage is increasing because the size of the addition is increasing by 123 square feet in the footprint. So you'll see it extends out eight and a half feet or 8.8 feet longer than the current addition. However, open space increases and becomes better because we take the building off of that back property line. And therefore that is actually exposed and the differential actually makes the open space better. It's a weird thing about the calculation, but that's what, that's how it ends up.
Okay. Alright, thank you, that's, those are all the questions I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, we move on to Mr. Swan.
Yeah. Interesting Lisa, you comment on the, on the, our new look, it is fun for us to see each of the other members, I would like someday to see you too. But we're not quite there yet. The, on this page that we have up here, I, I couldn't help but notice that the setback on the proposed two-story addition is now, it's no longer like flush with the front of the building, it's actually set back a little bit. Is, is that correct? It's, it's been moved back at least a half a foot or something?
That's correct, so both of the corner boards now, if, if you could go back up to that elevation again, or back down to that elevation, again Caitlin, I think it's right there. So both of the corner boards are now exposed, so it has been pushed in both from Liberty Street and from the rear property line.
Okay, yeah, I think, like that's a good move, particularly with something that's on the street. Could you go back to the previous slide that showed the plot plan? The, there's a comment on that lower picture. It says, in the bottom left corner, it says install, this is a replace by two-minute sidewalk with bricks, so I don't think you have to, this is a requirement, but this is what's happening as part of this plan?
That's correct.
Okay, I just trying to understand that. You mentioned the two objective, two abutters are in support, are those the two that are shown here, the, the one in the top and the one on the right?
Yes sir, they're both of the immediate abutters have provided letters to the board.
Has, have we heard from, obviously we didn't hear during public comment of anybody who's against it, but have we received any letters of anybody not supporting it?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Swan.
I applaud you for going back to the Historic Commission, by the way, before you came here and working it out with them and getting their support, that was very positive. And we're not supposed to comment on taste, I I think this is a really nice house, and I think this is a tasteful addition, so that's just a, a side comment, so I have no other comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, and Mr. Jagnon? Are we still muted?
Did we lose him?
Chair, it looks like he may have dropped out the call at this moment.
Okay, we'll wait for him to, to get back in, so we'll, we'll go to Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions, my colleagues have covered the waterfront, I would simply say that for many positives about this project, it's very thoughtfully done and my view, quite tasteful and consistent with the historic nature of that structure. I appreciate the effort that went into that.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, I, I would agree, for all the reasons my colleagues have stated and would, would hope that we can get Mr. Jagnon back quickly. I don't know how long we'll give him to come back, it sounds like we're all in support of this, so with the members that are still live, well, we can move on this. But I would like to hear from him if possible, so give it a minute or two. Caitlin, has there been any luck?
No, I'm not seeing him this time.
No, Attorney Mead, given the fact that we still have four members minimal board, and you've heard our comments, would you feel comfortable going forward, did you rather effort? Hate to use that term, try to give a few minutes to get Mr. Jagnon back in.
No sir, I, I'd be fine with the board going forward.
Okay. Alright, so I'm going to close deliberations right now because we lost education with the check, and if he comes back in shortly, we'll reopen and have him speak, but I believe I'm comfortable going forward in looking for a motion unless the board has a problem with this.
I'll make a motion, this is Ken Swanton, to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 64 Liberty Street, file 2021-52.
Greg Bennet Carroll, second that motion.
And we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Swan, and seconded by Mr. Bennet. Still no luck with our colleague coming on, we're going to move forward with this and, and proceed with the vote. Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Delisle, went out of turn. Mr. Delisle. He's frozen too, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
We lost Mr. Delisle too. I even tried to expedite the process and Mr. Delisle, how, how do you vote?
Oh no, I'm, I think
I can barely hear you, it's cutting in and out. Could you try again to get through? Cause we, it's breaking up, I could barely hear you. And your screen is frozen, if you can hear me.
Maybe he could chat, is there a chat mechanism or a telephone call number?
Just to be clear, there is a call-in phone number folks can use on the website, and that might be preferable. Panelists also have that in their emails. And not using video is one way to help with the connections, if there's anything like that going on.
But we look good.
Even, you look live, can you hear us?
Okay, great. And how vote you?
Yes.
Alright, so we have four in the affirmative. And the application is approved. And we'll move on and hopefully get our colleague back.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to the, the final application of the evening, and that's Joseph O'Donnell and Kelly Van Leeuwen O'Donnell, the Carol Lisa Mead. It's 143 Crow Lane, application 2021-55, special permit for non-conformities to construct an addition on a non-conforming single-family structure greater than 500 feet. And might we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, need tell him in Costa 30 Green Street on behalf of Joseph O'Donnell and Kelly Van Leeuwen O'Donnell of 143 Crow Lane, and if you could just confirm that you have at least four members.
Let's make sure we do, Mr. Bennet is still here.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Swan's still here, Mr. Delisle's still here, is that correct?
I'm here, yes.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, so if you could go to the first slide, please. Joe and Kelly have a single-story ranch on Crow Lane, I know this board has heard at least one, not two applications on Crow Lane in the last six months. They would like to construct an addition to the western side and rear of the existing single-family home. Importantly, they are doing so and not exacerbating any of the existing non-conformities or creating any new non-conformities. The structure was constructed in 1966 when the southern portion of Crow Lane off of Turkey Hill was laid out. I guess I don't have to say that very much longer because we only now have one Crow Lane. Many of you know, we used to have two Crow Lanes, now one of them is called Colby Farm Road. The property has an existing non-conformity for lot size, frontage and front yard setback and one of the side yard setbacks. It's in the R1 district now, which requires a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet where the lot has 16,5 125 feet of frontage where the lot has 100 feet of frontage. Front yard setback of 30 feet where the front yard setback is measured at 27.1 and a 20-foot side yard setback where the east side setback is 11.2, as you face the property that's on the left. Joe and Kelly, with the help of the architect Lane Jones, who was not able to be with us this evening, proposes to construct an addition on the western and rear side of the property that includes a two-car garage and additional rooms. The proposed addition takes advantage, as you'll see in a moment, of the topographical change on this lot. The proposed addition itself will have a front yard setback of 34, if you could go to the next slide please. And a rear yard, side yard setback of 22 feet on the western side, which is where the the house is being extended, which is greater than the 20 feet. The eastern side will not change, and the rear will still have a 45-foot setback where 30 feet is required. The height is a mean height of 22 feet where 30 feet is required. Additionally, the lot coverage will be increased from 7.01 to 16.1, which is still under the maximum of 20. And the open space will decrease from 83.1 to 73.9, which is still much greater than the minimum 50%. If you could go to the next slide please. So here is a plot plan of the existing structure on Crow Lane, you see the driveway. And we have a small ranch-style home at the front, the existing home is 1,164 square feet. Next slide please. If you could blow this up a little bit Caitlin, I actually think this is a really good, it's, it's tougher to see in these one-dimensional drawings, I'm gonna show you in a minute. But this is actually really good visual from the architect of how this house is laid out on the lot. So you'll see the existing structure at the front, and you can see the addition all goes back to the rear and a little bit to the west, that's the garage. And that the, the house itself, when I show you the photographs, I mean the lot, the topography drops off from the fright, front right to the back left corner. And so therefore, Lane takes advantage of some of that topography when he does this addition so that it doesn't overwhelm the ranch-style house in the front. But as you can see on this, it still continues to meet all of the setback requirements. Next slide please. So here's the, here are the line drawings. And what Lane has done on this to show you what the existing and the proposed is. And you'll see that it's hard to see this in three dimensions, that's why I thought that the plot plan was really important. On the left-hand side of the top photograph, top drawing, that's the existing structure, you can see he has existing outline there. And on the right is the proposed, but as you know, given what I showed you just a minute ago, that's actually set back, you can't see that on these flat drawings. But it actually goes to the rear of the property, but that's the, that's the proposed. On the, the north side elevation, you can see it a little better. And you can see how it drops back and you can see the existing and the proposed. Next slide please. And here we have the east elevation, again, you can see the topographical change a little bit on this. This is if you were in front of the house, this is the left side, the east elevation is the left side. And then the south elevation, you can see on the other, other side of the house, the other drawing in the back, you can see existing and proposed, that's if you were in the rear of the property. Next slide please. Again, this is a, a good way to see it, so the existing structure is in the light lines and that on the left-hand side of this drawing, the heavy dark lines are the proposed addition, you can see how it is all stepped back to the rear of the house and at the side of the house. And the next slide please. Again, I think on this drawing, you can see on the left-hand side, how, again, how this addition gets put on the property without overwhelming the front part of the property. Next slide please. So just to give you an idea, this is the home, this is the, on Crow Lane. And you'll see that that driveway stays the same and goes to service the back where the addition is gonna be placed on the house, next slide please. Again, you can see the topography on this slide, I think this is an important slide, and you'll see, you'll understand better how the addition doesn't overwhelm the, the existing structure, next slide please. Again, this is from past the house on the left, nothing's happening on the front part of this, of the, of this side of the house, which is where the the current non-conformity is, next slide please. And these are some pictures of other houses in the neighborhood, so here's another house on Crow Lane that is also a ranch, next slide please. But then you can see how people have started to add on to their homes on Crow Lane, so we have an addition of a garage, next slide please. And here we have a split that's been added to the, to the, to, on Crow Lane, next slide please. And here's another house on Crow Lane, this done an additional garage added on to the original ranch, next slide please. And here's the house, the, the Virginia Lane, in, in a little bit, we're gonna talk about the neighborhood generally, but Virginia Lane ends at Crow Lane, and here's a house on this end of the original section of Virginia Lane. Next slide please. And Storybook Drive also ends in Crow Lane, so there's a sample of a home on Storybook Drive. Next slide please. And similarly, another home on Storybook Drive. So next slide please. So the board must decide whether or not there's two criteria, whether or not there's any new non-conformities, and in this instance, there are no new non-conformities created and none are exacerbated. The next condition, of course, or criteria, is whether or not the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Here, by constructing the addition to the rear and westly side of the property, in a way, it's entirely conforming with the dimensional requirements. The proposed addition that the owners and Lane have done is mindful to minimize any impact on the surrounding neighborhood by not creating any By not creating any new nonconformities or extending any existing nonconformities. Lane has been able to utilize the topography of the lot in the middle and western portions. And take advantage of how the eastern side drives, drops off. The proposed addition is built partially into the ground on the western side, helping to minimize the height disparities between the existing house and the proposed addition. While allowing the applicants to add space in a way that does not radically change the appearance of the structure from the street. A portion of the garage will be slightly taller than the existing house. But it will be constructed toward the rear and not directly up against the existing structure. Also, it bears to mention that the use is remaining a single family, of course, the least intense use possible in this primarily single family residential district. As I noted earlier, other houses on Crow Lane, Goldsmith Drive, Barton Drive, Knights Lane, Virginia Lane, Storywork. Show many different examples of both larger, single family homes than what is being proposed. This proposal will not either be the largest nor the smallest in the neighborhood. And this neighborhood is evolving in many different ways as this board has noted in the past. Next slide, please. So what I wanted to just show you, so obviously the house highlighted in the middle is this property. And you see Virginia Lane, Knights Lane and Storybook all coming into it. Goldsmith is to the rear. What's important to note in this property, and I will say that you've received 12 letters of support for Joe and Kelly on this. That includes the butters to the direct rear of Goldsmith Drive, all three of butters. A butters, two widths on either side of them on Crow Lane. And a butters across the street on both sides of Virginia Lane and Storybook Drive. So that you have received 12 letters of support from just about all of the surrounding neighbors you could possibly find. With that, I request the board to grant this special permit for nonconformities. And allow Joe and Kelly to proceed with Lane in improving their home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll now turn to a public comment. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this application. That is on the, on the call right now, still. Use the raise hand icon and to be recognized and we'll move forward.
Not seeing any hands at this time, Chair.
I'm not surprised. So at this point, we will close public comment and move on to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
I just have one question. Just Attorney Mead, if you could just speak to the materials that'll be used on the exterior of the, of the building. Once it is in process as proposed.
So I, I have to tell you, Mr. Delisle, I don't know specifically all of the materials and Lane was unavailable this evening. I would say that, you know, he's got some barn board that he has shown on the plans that you can see. And you can see that the windows are four over ones. And, you know, divided light windows. So I can't speak to the exact materials. I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I I think your plot plan showing all the setbacks was a very useful way to show that. I also liked your line drawings like this one here. And I thought your layout of the butters showing all the letters of support and where they were in the neighborhood. Was very compelling. Actually, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chagman, we welcome you back.
Thank you. I was on the phone, by the way, so maybe next, next time if one of us drops, I'll look over in the attendees list and see if there's a strange phone number hanging out there.
My apologies.
No, that's all right. No. With that said, I don't really have any questions, but I will say a great presentation, a very unique design to fit in this lot and I think it's very tasteful. But I've got no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet.
I have a question. What is the total square footage of the addition? If you know, including the garage.
Sure, the total square footage addition is 1,428 square feet.
The current home is 1,000 or so, is that what you said?
1,164.
I'm just trying to if you can help me view that size home in the context of the neighborhood there.
So I think probably all but the first slide that we showed, I suspect, although I don't have the exact calculations of all of the surrounding homes. But if you look at, if you could pick up the contextual slides. Caitlin or Andy. There we go. So the first, obviously the first ranch that I showed you is almost exactly like the ranch, Joe and Kelly's ranch. So that's got to be about 1,100 square feet. I wouldn't take it more. But then you start to see that the if you go to the next slide, we'll just, so obviously that's got more than 2,500 square feet in it. Oh, go back one. It's a Crow Lane also. Next slide, please. Crow Lane's not a huge street. Here's also Crow Lane. There's an, I don't know if you can see that. I think there's a little addition on the back and a mudroom here. So I suspect that this is greater than 11, but probably not 25. Next slide, please. Again, this is Virginia Lane. So this is the first, when I say the first part of Virginia Lane, so how this neighborhood was developed to have Crow Lane. And then Virginia Lane and Storybook were built off of Crow Lane as a subdivision. But it was a much larger subdivision, which started and then stopped. The developer at the time never finished it. And so the original part of Virginia Lane, which is this, which abuts closest to Crow Lane. Had smaller houses than the ones at the other end of Crow Lane, which are closer to Story Avenue. So this house obviously is, is greater than 1,100, but probably a little less than 25 or just about, depending on how big the back is. And it's got room over the garage as well. Next slide, please. This is Storybrook. Again, this is the development right next to, this is the older end of Storybrook. That house has probably got about 2,500 square feet in it. Next slide, please. And this also Storybrook, again, I suspect that this has got, you know, 20, you know, 2,000 to 2,500 square feet.
Thank you. One other, show me, would, if you don't mind, would you just show me the, the, the picture that depicts the the topography as it slopes down from the back of the existing building? And could you comment what? What's the, what's the level of the slope there?
So if you could go to the first photograph, I think Caitlin or Andy. I never know who's operating the, so do you see that this is the house and you can see the, so you have, if you go, maybe the next slide shows it a little bit better. There we go. So you see the drop in the elevation, you can see the exposed foundation. So if you're on the right hand side of the house. There's really very little exposed foundation. You go to the left and there's almost a full story of exposed foundation. So this is built, this is built to the back. And so the larger part of the addition that's more like a two story part is behind that, taking advantage of that slope.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had my visuals correct. Must say the architect was rather creative in using that topography and minimizing the scale of this addition. Thanks for the help.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I think my colleagues have, have covered. I have no further questions. So we'll close questions from the board and move on to deliberations. And as such, I won't abbreviate this like I did last time in the, the curveball phase of the meeting. But we should couch our deliberations around the necessary findings for special permit for nonconformities, as was discussed by the applicant. And we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. In looking at the, the standard for special permit for nonconformities. There's no new nonconformity here and what's proposed, in my opinion, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Rather, it takes a very simple, a simple house. It makes it very interesting. And I think that, that Lane Jones is drawings here sort of channel some, some part, some, some aspect of Royal Barry Wills and looks really, really nice, the way that, that he, he drew it out. So I can support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I, I think it's already been pointed out that there are no new nonconformities. I mean, this picture on the it's in front of us right now, showing that two story structure over there. I mean, that's fact, the fact this was kept at one story and it's kind of in the back. Really, I, I, I understand what Mr. Bennet was getting at with the massing, but to me, I think the architect, as he pointed out, has done a good job of trying to fight that with their approach. Taking advantage of the topology. So I too can support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chagman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I, again, I'll reiterate, a great presentation, nice design. I must admit, when I first looked at the drawings when we received them, I thought massing was going to be a problem, but in looking at some of the homes that have been modified in the area. As Attorney Mead said, it certainly won't be the largest home in the area and it'll no longer be one of the smallest. With that said, I can support it and I think it's a wonderful design and a great improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet.
I, I will concur in those observations. This is kind of the interesting neighborhood, isn't it? I mean, it it has, has a kind of a Heinz variety of approaches, but this approach clearly is very well done and I'm particularly impressed by the fact that all, that there are 12 butters here who are not 12 butters, but 12 neighbors who to support this project. I, I think the scaling and massing did catch my eye, but at the end of the day, I think there's no question that this is an improvement to that home and to the neighborhood and is consistent with the findings we have to make here. So I will, I would approve this application for nonconforming, nonconformities as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And for all of the reasons my colleagues mentioned, I would, I would agree that's the one word that came to mind with the neighborhood was an eclectic grouping of, of homes, old and new. And I applaud the creativity here in really expanding the size of this house without you know, with a real thoughtful way to, to not make the massing an issue with in any way, shape or form here. So I too can support this. With that, I close deliberations and we will look for a motion.
This is Bud Shagman. I'll make a motion to approve docket 2021-55, a special permit for nonconformities for 143 Crow Lane.
Second, Ken Swanon.
Right, motion made and seconded to approve. That made by Mr. Chagman, second by Mr. Swanon. And we'll go to a vote. Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanon.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I am also a yes, all in the affirmative. The application is approved.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's good to see you this evening.
Thank you. Good to be seen. And with that, we have exhausted the agenda of public hearings for this evening. And we will now close that portion and move on to our business meeting. Which will start with approval of the minutes from a 1012 meeting. Does anyone have any additions, notations, comments? Before we proceed to a vote on the minutes.
None here.
Hearing I just hear an interruption. Does someone have a comment? No.
I will, we approve the minutes, Ken Swanon. There we go.
We have a motion to approve the minutes made by Mr. Swanon, seconded by Mr. Delisle. We'll go to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanon.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. All in the affirmative, the minutes are approved from the 1012 meeting. Thank you, gentlemen. There's one additional thing that I believe we should discuss this evening. That's not listed in the agenda, but there was an email from Andy sent out that KP Law would like to do a little 40B primer. Or primer, I know if that's the right way to pronounce it. On the ninth of November, but as we learned earlier today, the docket on the ninth is pretty full. So having KP Law hit us up at the end of public hearings might cause for a really late meeting. So we have two options. We can stay late, maybe do it earlier or come up with Plan C. So we'll put that up for a little discussion here. Andy, do you have anything to add to?
No, if Chair Moore mentioned very eloquently, it's, it's sort of that bouncing act and we wanted to get an overview for you as soon as possible of the process, should you be seeing a 40B in the near future. Just to make sure you're comfortable with the process and if you have any questions, we can answer them or, you know, get further guidance for you. But we weren't sure, you know, again, if you feel like, you know, you prefer to push it out or my thinking was just perhaps if the board could meet at six o'clock or something like that, that we could take care of that prior to your regular meeting. So it's not to impact your ability to complete things that night, but kind of defer to you as a board, how urgently you want to do it and whether or not you're comfortable, you know, early that night if possible.
That's right. I guess my, my, my question, thank you, Andy. By the way, my question would be is the preference to do it before, is everyone going to be available before that meeting to do that? Versus doing it later or is there another date just for a specific meeting? Can that be done? Does it have to be done during a public hearing, a scheduled public hearing night?
It could be done as a special meeting and we can, again, we can push it out. The, the balancing act, of course, is I'm trying to make sure you're up to speed. Should there be something that comes in? I, you know, I think we could perhaps push that to the next meeting. I guess, I don't know, Caitlin. What you think the agenda looks like for that next meeting, but what we were trying to do is make sure you have an overview early as possible so that addition to the overview. The attorney who's providing the overview is working with me to provide an update for your 40B regulations, which is a subsection of the board's local rules and regs. And so in order to update those, we wanted to kind of initiate that conversation such that I could also return back with him in short order to ask you to adopt some updates to the regular.
Okay, Andy, what's the, your sense of the length of this presentation and update?
I, I think it would take about a half hour at most, you know, to go over things and, you know, it's then after that, it's just more of questions for you, I guess, but we understood that the agenda already has some things on it. We just weren't sure what he wanted to tag there on the end and you know, folks might feel a little bit, you know, like a lot's been done, but by the time we reach that point in the night, not sure.
Yeah, this is Bud Shagman. I guess my preference would be to do the six o'clock option rather than a separate night and, you know, completely separate night. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Is everyone else got a, is anyone else have a problem with a six if they know now that we want to do that at six?
I think that would work for me.
Okay.
Yeah, that would work for me. I'm just, is something imminent? The, I mean, is there a reason to do this soon?
Well, I was just saying a second ago, not being sure when, if or when a 40B filing would be made, we want to make sure the board is up to date as soon as possible. And then in addition to that, as I said a moment ago, part of that is to have a discussion so that we can circle back with you in short order to ask you to, at a subsequent meeting, consider updating your regulations therefore. So that's the reason for doing that, because those things take time to, you know, there's weeks, weeks in between meetings and there's time that takes to revise documents and speak with the attorney. We, we're just trying to map those things out to make sure that prior to anything coming in, you are well up to speed, both in terms of regulations and your overview. So that, you know, without knowing the definitive date of an application coming in, I can't say anything more than that.
Say, Andy, would this presentation from our city solicitor cover whether or not this city has a housing product, production plan that shields us from an unfriendly 40B? I mean, that's really a legal question.
Yeah, no, I, no, I don't think that's really the purpose of this meeting and I probably isn't the right setting to have that discussion in. But it's more to discuss how the process works from the zoning board of appeals perspective. We can certainly, and I think he will be covering some of the basics of how that works. You know, we can sort of elaborate on that, but the purpose is to make sure you're familiar with how the process works because there are already folks underway and we can provide sort of a recap for you. But, you know, folks already underway, Caitlin and myself specifically, trying to Um, trying to make sure that uh, we're taking credit for any units that we have, um, you know, in terms of the so-called safe harbor status. Um, and uh, getting full credit for those with Department of Housing and Community Development, but. Uh, none of that is going to change as a result of the board's discussion. Now, our goal is mainly to make sure that the board. Um, feels comfortable with the process that it might be uh, going through if a forty B is filed. Cause it is a little bit different than a um, special permit uh, process or variance process you, you typically deal with and. Uh, there, it's been a while since the board's had an application like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I fully support having this meeting. I'm disappointed we can't talk about whether. We're shielded, but I, I guess this, this is a necessary first step. I'm, I, I was up to my eyeballs in my last municipality as chairman of the Board of Selectmen fighting off forty Bs and to me, it's a. I, I, I'm just shocked. We don't know whether or not we have a uh, housing production plan that, that. Gives us protection right now as we speak from a forty B, and so we're worried about them. I, I'm just stunned. But I, having said that, I don't want to debate it tonight. I'll just.
I said, I'll just. Ken, just to, you know, to, to answer your question and to make it clear, we do actually know the answer to that question. We're not there right now. We have the ability to get there in the near term by approving the planning board, approving a project that is before them right now on Route One. Uh, we do know the math associated with our present position and how to get ourselves to a better uh, negotiating position, should that, you know, in terms of safe harbor. Um, it's just that that's, it's not the best thing to sort of go through all those, um, you know, details, you know, um. It, that's, there's a whole lot of strategy associated with the, how the numbers are counted and, and um, each, it's a very complicated system essentially, but. We are efforting, uh, we all know the status and we're efforting to try to uh, make sure the city is in the best position regardless of what comes before the board. Um, but again, this is about making sure the board is up to speed on the regulations.
Okay, I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to belabor this. I fully support having this, as Bud suggested, as an early topic at our next meeting.
Do you think you're good with that?
We support that too. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, I, let's do it. Let's plan to do it at uh, six PM. On the evening of, or a meeting on November ninth.
I'm sorry, just to confirm, six PM exactly, or uh, is that?
I believe six PM.
Okay, great. No, that's, that's wonderful. Thank you.
All righty, that'd be great. And I mean, is there a, um, would you feel comfortable uh, with answering this question? Is it more likely or not that we will face a forty B by the end of the year?
Uh, that much I cannot answer. Uh, Mayor and I did have a meeting with New England Development, uh, today. Uh, we talked to them about the Waterfront West area and um, the recent uh, discussion or suggestion that uh, they'd be working with Avalon on a. Two-hundred-and-thirty unit project there under the forty B process. Um, we had explained to them that we, uh, I know we think that there's some folks here in the city who would like to discuss Waterfront West further. Um, and the zoning that, you know, they feel like does not work for them, but um, the city feels is necessary to some degree to protect uh, the compatibility of that area. As it's built out with the downtown. So, you know, we made it clear that we'd like to discuss those, those things further. Um, there was some desire to do that, uh, from some others, both the planning board and city council and. So, um, you know, hopefully we'll be able to make some progress in those discussions. Um, and, and I, I wouldn't imagine if, if those are underway, that you're going to see something in next month, but. Um, but there certainly is the possibility of that, uh, because uh, they've expressed some concern that the local zoning doesn't work for them. Um, and um, uh, so again, I, I can't predict the exact timing of someone coming with an application on the private side. Um, but I've obviously indicated that they'd like to work with Avalon, who is a company that is well-prepared for that type of application. Um, so, um, I guess it's a, it's a little, a little bit of the balls in their court right now.
Okay, fair enough. So in the meantime, we'll prepare and, and uh, we'll be ready for a six o'clock meeting on the ninth to uh. To kind of refresh. Mr. Swan might want to lead the charge on, no, uh. We've, refresh some of our memory or bring us up to speed, it will say, and then it'll bring back uh, nightmares that Mr. Swan is going to re- have to relive. But um, that's what we'll do on the ninth. And with that, unless anyone has anything else they want to discuss. We can call it a day if there's a, if there's a motion.
I move that we adjourn before nine o'clock. Hey, hey.
Wow, when you skip a few steps and that makes it fast, doesn't it? All right, uh. We have a motion uh, to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Delisle, I'll say, and uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone objecting? Thank God. And with that, the meeting is closed.
Great, good night, everybody.
Everybody. Thanks, Gretchen.